Welcome everyone. And we will begin in a couple of seconds. We just want to give everyone a chance to filter in. Thank you for attending our webinar today.
Good morning. I'm Tom McDonald, partner with the National Law Firm of Vori Sater in Washington, DC. And I'm with the law firm of Vori Sater, as I said, and was the U.S. Ambassador to Zimbabwe from 1997 to 2001. I'm also a board member of the Corporate Council in Africa. And on behalf of CCA, I'd like to thank each of you for joining us today for one of our 2020 UNGA series. Over the next three days, we will convene country-focused sessions featuring senior U.S. and African government officials and private sector executives to explore the theme Partnering for Economic Recovery. Today's session will highlight the strategies and steps taken by the government of Morocco and the U.S. public and private sectors to facilitate critical economic recovery and response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I would like to welcome Moroccan Ambassador La Lamy, Minister of Industry, Trade, Investment and Digital Economy, to this important CCA program. Mr. Minister, you have a most impressive and diverse resume, starting with your education in Canada and work in the Ministry of Finance in Quebec. In fact, I hail, Mr. Minister, from upstate New York, Binghamton. And with my family, as a child, we would often visit Valley Field and up into Montreal as a child. After returning home to Morocco, you engaged in various aspects of the public private employment sector, including in the insurance industry, worked at a prominent financial services company, and additionally was founder and owner of Sanham Group, which included the largest insurance company in Morocco. Saham also included call centers and clinics. The minister was chairman of Morocco's FIFA bid for 2026 FIFA World Cup. Mr. Minister, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Ambassador. As you know, I will talk in French if it's possible. It's easier for me. So I will start right now. Monsieur le Secrétaire d'État Wilbur Ross, Madame la Présidente du CCA Floriselle Lizer, Monsieur l'Ambassador McDonald, Altesse Royale, Mesdames et Messieurs. Je voudrais partager avec vous quelques idées. Alors déjà, la situation économique mondiale marquait quelques signes de fatigue avant l'arrivée de la pandémie. Les impacts de cette pandémie sont en effet multiples. Et je voudrais là souligner, si vous le permettez très rapidement, quelques effets qui me semblent significatifs. D'abord sur le volet économique et puis ensuite sur l'indépendance des économies, y compris pour les secteurs stratégiques tels que la santé, il y a eu une espèce de prise de conscience générale. Alors sur le premier volet, je ne m'étendrai pas longtemps sur le sujet parce que vous en savez bien mieux que moi sur l'impact de cette pandémie sur les économies, sur nos économies. Mais je voudrais juste faire un commentaire et vous rappeler que les chiffres ont été assez élocrants. Lorsqu'on regarde l'évolution du PIB et ses perspectives à fin d'année, on dit qu'il y aurait un recul de l'ordre de 5,2% au niveau mondial, de 7% pour les pays industrialisés, de 4,2% pour la région MENA et pour 2,8% uniquement pour le continent africain. Alors en effet, on voit cette espèce de résilience du continent africain, mais fort probablement cela est dû à un retard parfois et voire même souvent du développement de l'ensemble des pays du continent. Alors je voudrais vous parler aussi de l'interdépendance sur ces fameux secteurs stratégiques. Nous avons tous pris conscience lors de cette pandémie que nous étions interdépendants économiquement. Cela, on le savait déjà. Et nous avons découvert que nous étions relativement fragilisés par des dépendances de médicaments, de masques, de respirateurs et d'éléments qui pouvaient sauver des vies dans des cas types cette pandémie. Nous avons constaté que la majorité des pays ont considéré fortement une volonté de redistribuer ses cartes économiques parce que cette vulnérabilité semble trop forte et parfois insupportable. Alors certains l'appellent relocalisation, d'autres l'appellent conlocalisation et d'autres aussi l'appellent indépendance pour tout ce qui est stratégique. Ce qui est certain, c'est que cette espèce de tectonique qui est en train de s'opérer va engendrer beaucoup d'opportunités, probablement quelques difficultés pour les pays qui vont perdre un certain nombre d'activités. Mais nous sommes convaincus que beaucoup d'opportunités vont se présenter à l'ensemble du continent. Alors que peut offrir l'Afrique dans un cadre de partenariat global? L'Afrique est en effet un véritable grenier de ressources naturelles. Ça, nous le savons. C'est un fournisseur mondial de fer, de cobalt, de phosphate, de bauxite et de biens d'autres minerais. Beaucoup de pays l'ont réalisé et certains ont été très actifs dans le domaine en allant investir le continent africain ou investir dans le continent, dans ce continent africain. Ce qu'on ne sait peut-être pas, c'est que ce continent est un véritable réservoir de compétences, d'ingénieurs, de techniciens supérieurs. Et j'en veux pour preuve ce que nous avons vécu au Maroc lors de cette pandémie. Pendant la pandémie, nous avons été comme tous les pays du monde frappés de plein fouet, surpris. Et nous avons eu le roi du Maroc qui a pris des décisions très en amont dès le tout début de la pandémie pour protéger la santé des Marocains. Et il a incité l'ensemble de la Constitution, enfin des gens qui constituent, si vous voulez, l'économie marocaine, dont l'industrie qui relève de notre département, d'apporter tout ce qu'ils pouvaient pour aider le secteur médical à s'en sortir de cette pandémie. Alors le Maroc très rapidement, qui ne faisait absolument aucun masque, s'est retrouvé à fabriquer 17 millions de masques par jour pour une population de 36 millions. Nous avons aussi découvert des ingénieurs dans le secteur aéronautique qui se sont regroupés et qui ont fait un des respirateurs les plus performants au monde. Vous savez, le meilleur respirateur au monde est la marque Drager allemande, à laquelle on autorise une marge d'erreur de 20%. Ce respirateur fait par les ingénieurs marocains accepte une marge d'erreur de 3%. Nous avons vu ces entreprises fabriquer des machines qu'on importait avant de Chine et qui, elles, fabriquent ces masques chirurgicaux. Le secteur automobile et le secteur aéronautique se sont liés pour fabriquer ce type de machine. Nous avons fabriqué au Maroc les thermomètres à infrarouge, les caméras à infrarouge et tout récemment le test PCR. Alors nous avons un test PCR fabriqué par des ingénieurs marocains qui est aujourd'hui opérationnel et c'est celui-là que nous utilisons. Nous avons aussi découvert la semaine dernière lors d'une visite en France que ce fameux test à la salive qui est présenté en France est fabriqué au Maroc, à Tangier. Ce que je ne savais pas en tant que ministre de l'Industrie, c'était quelque chose qui m'échappait. Eh bien, j'ai découvert à Montpellier que cette machine était fabriquée au Maroc. C'est vous dire que la capacité de fabrication par ces ressources humaines africaines, marocaines, sont en mesure de faire des choses assez étonnantes. On ne le sait pas suffisamment. Au Maroc, nous fabriquons des voitures, nous fabriquons 700 000 voitures par an avec 60% de total d'intégration. Et nous fabriquons des parties d'avions importantes, y compris des réacteurs et la partie chaude. Vous savez qu'un réacteur est divisé en deux parties, une partie chaude et une partie froide. Et la partie chaude étant, dit-on, ce qui est de plus complexe dans le secteur de l'industrie, dans le monde. Eh bien, au Maroc, nous avons des ingénieurs qui fabriquent ces fameuses pièces de parties chaudes. Alors donc, nous avons aussi un marché qui a été fabriqué au fil des années en décidant dès le début d'avoir un pays avec une économie ouverte. Aujourd'hui, le Maroc a 56 pays avec lesquels il a signé des accords de libre-échange. Et ça fait de lui une plateforme avec un marché assez important. Quant à la compétitivité, et c'est ce que recherche aujourd'hui l'ensemble de nos opérateurs économiques, c'est la raison pour laquelle il y a eu un flux très fort, par exemple, vers la Chine. J'étais il y a plusieurs années président du patronat marocain, donc du regroupement des entreprises marocaines. Et j'avais vu disparaître des pans de notre économie au profit de la Chine, en particulier le textile qui était une force pour le pays et pour la région. Eh bien, nous avons tout perdu à ce moment-là. Eh bien, nous constatons aujourd'hui un retour de compétitivité assez fort et un retour de ses activités vers le Maroc. Je vous donnerai un exemple. Lorsque vous regardez le secteur automobile, nous avons gravé les échelons petit à petit. Et aujourd'hui, les deux seuls pays qui sont plus compétitifs que le Maroc sont la Chine et l'Inde, l'un destant dans ce secteur-là plus compétitif que la Chine. Notre plan actuel de continuer à améliorer cette compétitivité pour arriver dans les trois prochaines années à être exactement au même niveau que l'Inde en termes de compétitivité. Alors, dans ce cadre-là, nous avons constaté que l'Europe, par exemple, voulant se protéger aussi de ces échanges mondiaux qui ont envahi son marché, en particulier l'Asie, a décidé d'instaurer une taxe appelée taxe carbone. Cette taxe, lorsque vous avez un produit fini qui arrive en Europe et qui contient une pièce qui a été faite avec de l'énergie fossile et pas de l'énergie renouvelable, eh bien, on vous applique à ce produit-là ce qu'on appelle une taxe carbone. Pour cela, le Maroc a pris les devants depuis bien des années. Le roi du Maroc avait décidé de mettre de l'énergie renouvelable au Maroc lorsque personne ne comprenait pourquoi. On se disait, c'est fait pour des pays très riches. Or aujourd'hui, nous consommons 40% de notre énergie en énergie verte. Nous avons décidé de l'orienter vers l'industrie de façon à avoir aussi des produits décarbonés. Donc comme vous le savez, nous avons des accords de libre-échange avec les États-Unis, mais nous avons des accords de libre-échange aussi avec l'Europe et avec cette industrie décarbonée. Nous avons l'intention d'être au même niveau de compétitivité que l'Inde en 2023. Et nous avons bien travaillé dans ce sens-là avec des opérateurs type PSA, type Peugeot, pour pouvoir démontrer la capacité de passer de notre compétitivité actuelle à la compétitivité de l'Inde. On y ajoute le fait que nos produits seront décarbonés et ça nous donne une compétitivité intéressante. Alors parmi les choses que nous développons, nous avons une relation exceptionnelle entre les États-Unis et le Maroc. Mais l'idée est de continuer à renforcer ce partenariat et de faire du Maroc une plateforme de complémentarité avec les États-Unis, avec ce que je viens de vous dire. C'est-à-dire, c'est un pays qui est capable d'être innovant, d'avoir des ressources humaines de qualité. Et je dois vous avouer que moi-même, j'ai été largement et agréablement surpris lors de la pandémie COVID-19 de voir que ces jeunes ingénieurs ont fait des merveilles, vraiment des avancées extrêmement importantes. Donc je vous disais, il y a l'innovation des ressources humaines, le marché, la compétitivité et le fait que notre industrie peut être décarbonée. Je pense qu'il y a, on parle souvent d'amour, mais ce qui est plus important, c'est d'avoir des preuves d'amour. Et dans les relations économiques internationales, ce qui est important, c'est de démontrer quelle valeur ajoutée on peut apporter. C'est pour ça que je voulais partager avec vous ce que l'Afrique en général peut apporter dans des partenariats globaux. Et à titre d'exemple, ce que je connais un peu mieux, c'est le Maroc et dire comment le Royaume du Maroc peut dans des partenariats apporter une contribution, je l'espère, positive. Je vous remercie pour votre attention et surtout pour votre invitation. Merci.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minister. Our second featured speaker is U.S. Secretary of Commerce Wilbur Ross. Secretary Ross is the latest in a long line of commerce secretaries of both political parties, including Don Evans and the late Ronald H. Brown, committed to promoting U.S. business abroad and international trade. Secretary Ross has served since the beginning of the Trump administration and was selected for his significant business experience in far-flung substantial relationships. Previously, Secretary Ross advised former President Bill Clinton regarding the U.S.-Russian Investment Fund and was an adviser to New York City Mayor Rudy Giuliani during his terms. In his long private sector career, Secretary Ross operated several businesses, including starting his own company, W.L. Ross &amp; Company. Mr. Secretary, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ambassador McDonald, for that kind introduction. And a warm welcome to His Excellency Minister El Alami and Director Siddiqui. We are so grateful to have you join us. My thanks also to Floris Lizer and CCA for hosting today's dialogue and for your continued leadership connecting U.S. businesses with opportunities on the African continent. Our country has shared a special bond with Morocco since 1777, when Morocco became the first nation in the world to recognize the United States' independence from England. And just nine years later, the Kingdom was the first country to negotiate a treaty with our new nation when King Sultan Mohammed III and then diplomats Thomas Jefferson, John Adams and Thomas Barkley signed the Moroccan-Aurorican Treaty of Friendship in 1786. To date, it is our longest sustaining international treaty. I'm pleased that over the centuries our social, cultural and economic relationship has remained a close one. In 2019, the U.S. exported 3.5 billion dollars to Morocco, up from 3 billion in 2018. Moroccan exports to the U.S. remain stable at 1.6 billion both in 2018 and 2019. Those both were slight increases from the 1.2 billion in 2017. And our trade surplus with Morocco increased from 1.4 billion dollars in 2018 to 1.9 billion dollars in 2019. Our exports of goods and services to Morocco support an estimated 12,000 American jobs. And several U.S. companies have set up operations in Morocco because of its political and economic stability. In fact, the Kingdom rose seven spots from 2019's World Bank Ease of Doing Business rankings to 53rd in the world in 2020. It ranks as the third most attractive country for investment in the MENA region and number one in the Maghreb. Still, Morocco faces challenges in the wake of COVID-19's damaging impact to the entire MENA region and the global economy as a whole. In July, the IMF estimated that the coronavirus pandemic would prompt a 5.7% decrease in real GDP annual growth in the Middle East and North America in 2020. Oil production and tourism are among the sector's hardest hit after COVID crisis. An impact from these economic declines is rippling across the MENA region. Continuing to remove barriers to trade will aid in ameliorating your economic and investment climate with near-term effect, especially in areas like infrastructure, aerospace and defense and energy. American companies can and have offered expertise and experience in these sectors as you work to meet the needs of your growing population. Your population increased by nearly 8 million people between 1998 and 2018. Recent reforms, including the streamlining of paperless customs clearance and increased protections for minority investors, were important steps that will lead to continued growth for both our economies. And of note, within the Commerce Department's International Trade Administration, the advocacy center has recorded five advocacy assistance wins for U.S. aerospace, defense and energy businesses in Morocco. And we have one additional case pending. The total cumulative project value of these cases is 4.1 billion dollars with an estimated 3.1 billion dollars in U.S. export content. And turning now to infrastructure, American companies are eager to engage more as you identify additional needs in your water sector. We were pleased to welcome an official Moroccan delegation last September to the Water and Environment Federation's Technical Exhibition and Conference, where they met with key players in the private and public sectors and visited the Jardine Water Plant in Chicago. And we look forward to highlighting next Morocco this October 7th through 9th during the Discover Global Markets event in Indianapolis, where Director Siddiqui will join us again to discuss major upcoming projects in the Kingdom. Additionally, Acting Under Secretary for International Trade Joe Samsar is looking forward to visiting Morocco with the DFC-led U.S. delegation leader this week. Before I close, it is my pleasure to invite all of you to participate in the Commerce Department's 2021 Select USA Investment Summit, taking place June 6th through June 9th, 2021, in Washington, DC. This event provides a unique opportunity for Moroccan business executives to meet with economic development organizations from across the United States. Last year's summit was the first attended by a Moroccan delegation and it included 15 individuals from the legal services, logistics and distribution and hygienic products, catering and event planning, beauty products and cosmetics, financial services, agro businesses, pharmaceuticals and food and beverage industries, as well as members of AMCHAM and the Moroccan Exporters Association. I look forward to welcoming a Moroccan delegation once again to next year's summit. The U.S. government is committed to providing these kinds of resources in support of initiatives that deepen commercial ties between our two countries. So I thank you again for your devotion to our long-term bilateral relationship and friendship. And I look forward to today's discussions. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the conference.
Thank you so much, Secretary Ross, for those important remarks. I would now like to hand over to my colleague Miriam Al Rashid, partner and global co-chair of International Arbitration and co-head of Latin America Arbitration Practice Group at the International Law Firm of Evershed's in Sunderland, LLP. Miriam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ambassador, very much. And thank you to everyone for joining us today. It's a great honor to be moderating this panel. We have a very distinguished panel, which I would like to introduce at this moment. I'll start with Mr. Rick Angioni, who is the Director of Africa-U.S. Exum Bank. He joined the Export-Import Bank of the United States Exum in March of 2009 and is currently Director of Africa in the Office of Board Authorized Finance. Rick has been responsible for developing Exum Bank's activities with Africa and is engaged in developing in developing the U.S. government's Prosper Africa strategy. So it's very much in line, of course, with, Rick, what he does is very much in line with our discussion today about the private and public cooperation to assist with Morocco's development and its economic recovery post-COVID in particular. In 10 years, Rick has worked at Exum Bank. The portfolio has grown its annual credit authorizations from $500 million to, in 2009, to over $5 billion fiscal year 2019. And just lastly here, is there much more to say, I'm sure, about Rick Angioni? He has assisted in the origination and underwriting of both small and large transactions over 44 countries across Africa, so quite a depth, in-depth experience and knowledge in the region. Next, and this is, of course, in no particular order, we have Douglas Kelly, who is the Regional Director of Morocco, Senior Manager, BCA Supplier Operations of Boeing. And we know that Boeing and Morocco have a very good relationship. Doug has served currently as a Regional Director for Morocco, and he has led the team that has actually been responsible for the execution and engagement of the Boeing MOU, a Memorandum of Understanding, signed with the Kingdom of Morocco in September of 2016. In his position, Doug and the team have utilized Morocco's strategic value and capabilities as an incentive for the existing Boeing supply base to potentially manufacture either current work, sub-tier supply, or new Tier One work. So in essence, really trying to grow the economy and workforce in Morocco. And Doug is going to tell us a lot about that with, of course, some input from our next speaker that I'll introduce on the panel, Mr. Ali Sadeki. So moving forward, Mr. Sadeki is Managing Director, Ministry of Industry, Investment, Trade, and Digital Economy at the Kingdom of Morocco. Mr. Sadeki, in general, is General Director of Industry.
I can't, pardon. Visual.
If I could just kindly ask for anyone who's not on, yeah, thank you, just mute. Prior to this, Mr. Sadeki was Director in Charge of Aeronautics, Rail, Naval, and Renewable Energies in the Ministry of Industry and Project Leader for the Boeing ecosystem in Morocco. So there's a lot of good exchange, I'm sure, of dialogue we'll have between Mr. Douglas Kelly and Mr. Ali Sadeki in regards to Boeing. Mr. Sadeki was a member of the Minister's office. He was advisor to the Minister for the Aerospace Industry. And lastly, but certainly not the only thing that is on Mr. Sadeki's very impressive CV, he was in charge of setting up the Industrial Acceleration Plan, IAP, which was a five-year strategy for boosting the Moroccan industry launched in 2014. So you can see, there's been a great deal of activity in Morocco on the economy and growth in various sectors, and here with Mr. Sadeki, in particular aerospace industry, from 2004, certainly after the events of the Arab Spring. So what we'd like to do, after I've made that introduction, is move forward with questions for panelists. Now, so that everyone knows, I'm addressing three questions to each panelist, and it would be very nice to have such panelists that I address the question to start off with their preliminary answer, and I'll invite other members of the panel to chime in if they have any additional comments, or feel free to raise your hand and unmute and chime in after the preliminary.
Of course.
Member on the panel. So let me start with question one. And to be clear, we will have a question and answer session after our panelists have spoken with my questions to them. I'm inviting this question to Mr. Ali Sadeki. Just to put some context, we've heard this from His Excellency and from the Ambassador, Tom McDonald, who's mainly done introductions. We've heard a little bit about Morocco and what it's done post-COVID, what its intentions are with the economy and for growth and recovery. And we know that there's been a launch of 1 billion USD investment fund to support the African industry and trade. They've called this the African, or the Africa Recovery Fund, and it will be based in Morocco, out of Morocco. Just to provide additional context, we do know that there have been some shutdowns recently. We know that in March, Morocco took measures as a government to manage the pandemic, and that was both financial and operative from a day-to-day basis to protect the economy, but also protect the people from the pandemic. Indeed, the economy has suffered as a result, and so we do understand the Moroccan government has taken certain financial policy initiatives to be part of the economic recovery. On August 6th, most recently, we note that the authorities announced, the Moroccan authorities announced, and maybe there's some clarity we can get from Mr. Sadeki on this, a plan to sustain the economic recovery and employment levels. Now, in doing that, the plan envisaged the mobilization of 120 billion, as I understand, and again, we might get some clarity here if this is similar or different from the Africa Recovery Fund, mainly in the form of credit guarantees to firms and funding for a newly-created fund for strategic investment. Again, not sure we know if this is the same or something different from the Africa Recovery Fund, but we understand this will finance investment projects, including PPPs, which, of course, is public and private cooperation, the very subject of this panel discussion about growth for Morocco's economy. And this fund for strategic investment sustains a capital firms that need equity injections to develop their business. Now, Mr. Sadeki, if you could tell us a little bit more about what measures have been taken by the Moroccan government to control the pandemic, just from a very sort of real-time, realistic perspective on the ground, and what plans the Moroccan government, outside of what we've heard recently from other members who've already spoken, that the Moroccan government has instored in reopening the economy, recognizing, of course, that we are in a world where there is no going back to the normal that once was. So if you could please let us know your thoughts on that. Over to you, Mr. Sadeki.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Miriam. Well, indeed, His Majesty the King, Mohammed VI, took very, gave very clear instructions on how to deal with the pandemic since the very, very early on, the pandemic. And the message was very clear to all members of government, which was, priority was given to the population and health. So what we had to put in place was really trying to protect as much as possible our people, but we had also to maintain continuity of business. So the challenge was to do both in parallel, and the first measures that was undertaken was a very tight cooperation with the local authorities to make sure that we were able to test and isolate anyone with COVID while keeping the facility, the plants working. And I think that, I mean, we're very happy to see that it was proven successful. Morocco was able to be resilient and manage to really keep the business running, the plants running, and even go a little further by using all the engineers, the technicians, to try to innovate. So that was one of the key takeaways in the Minister's El Alemi speech introduction. He was mentioning how key it was to, and how this pandemic helped us reveal some of our talents. And this is what we were able to do, thanks to the measures that we put in place. So to be very concrete, it was being able to work in collaboration with the private sector and the private sector's associations as well. We had a war room within the ministry to be able to monitor what was happening. So we would receive calls every day from the companies, knowing if there was suspicion over cases, sending in coordination with the Ministry of Health people to do the tests on site, taking samples of people to do the tests, the ones that were closer with the suspected one, et cetera, and then working with the local authority to make sure that everything was cleaned and that the sanitary measures was put in place in order for the business to keep running. So that was key cooperation, is the key word here, and having the ability to monitor and work closely with the private sector. And that is really one of the, I would say, the most valuable thing that we learned from the pandemic, is that we are able to work with the private sector in, I would say, in a direct manner, not using the proper, the classical, traditional channels, but really having them with us, working hand-in-hand with the government in order to deal with the complexity of having to deal with the people, having to isolate them, test them, isolate them, and make the business keep on running. So I would say that was the first measure, and that gave us, or at least showed the ability of Morocco to become resilient. Another key message that the Minister shared with us in the introduction was the fact that we had to prove, we were able to prove the agility and how nimble the country can be in those situations, because we went from manufacturing 30,000 masks per day to 17 million masks. That was also part of the high instructions from His Majesty the King. He identified several products that needed to be manufactured in order to fight against the pandemic. And, well, going from 30,000 to 17 million in less than a month and a half showed how the cooperation with the private sector can help you achieve basically anything, because we had to change everything inside the plants. We had to not only equip the machines, but adapt the machines in order for them to be able to produce masks. There was also the same experience that we had in the mask production in the hydroalcoholic gel, sorry, and that we needed to also to ramp up, ramp up the production. So really, the key takeaway is, the main measure was this platform that we created to monitor both aspects, the health, which was our priority, maintaining all the sanitary measures in the production system, while having the production keep on going and ramping up. And that was the big challenge, and thankfully, we managed to do this. This was the first phase, I'd say, of the crisis. Second phase was, okay, now that we have the system that is put in place and already working efficiently, we need to think about what's coming next and how we will recover and have a lasting strategy in order to get through the crisis. And again, His Majesty recently announced in his speech that a fund for helping the country recover from the crisis will be activated by the Ministry of Finance, and all the departments, all the members of the government should contribute with their own strategy in order to be using the fund to support their own businesses and companies and private sector affiliates. In the case of the industry, or the Ministry of Industry, it's pretty clear what we intend to do. We keep on giving incentives to companies who are willing, which are willing to invest in the country, which are willing to invest in strategic products, the ones mentioned by the Minister. We are now looking to develop a medical industry, medical device industry. We already started with some of the players, which we had collaboration with during the COVID-19. And we will give, indeed, we will inject equity, because cash is an issue right now due to the crisis, in order to boost the economy. So we are willing to give a lot of, to give a lot of money, inject a lot of money to spark investments and to keep on, and to keep the dynamic that we experienced prior to the crisis. Morocco was growing with two digits annually in automotive, in aerospace, and we intend to do, to reconnect with that growth very soon, thanks to this investment fund that is currently being put in place.
And if I may just follow up on that, the fund that we're talking about, there's been some talk through the IMF, which I know has been mentioned by His Excellency, and is the funds for strategic investment, which looks to be both public and private, different from the fund that we've heard today, the Africa Recovery Fund, with the 1 billion USD investment into the African industry and trade? Are these two the same thing, or separate funds, both having collaboration between private and public?
No, it's two separate funds. I only heard about the strategic fund that is currently being created, but most probably this will lead to strategic investment in Africa, because as you may know, Morocco is one of the leading African investor in Africa. Several years, we've been the first African investor in Africa, and we keep on investing in our neighboring countries. This is something that is very key to us. We call it the South-South Cooperation. And that's again, something that we need to enhance and improve in this very specific time we're living in, where we need to rely on new, on new growth opportunities. And we really think that what's happening is very challenging, but again, brings a lot of opportunities. There is a reshuffling, a global reshuffling of the supply chains that we're currently observing in Morocco. There is a lot of companies or global companies that are looking to mitigate their risks and looking for new hubs for production, because let's face it, we can have, I mean, we can manufacture in developed countries, but the costs are not going to follow, and you will need, in developed countries, we need to rely on other countries to manufacture with the, at competitive costs. But they cannot do it the same way they did prior to the crisis, because the crisis showed how dependent an economy can be to another economy. So you need to mitigate, mitigate the risk, and you need to find new sources for cost competitiveness. And this trend was already, we were already observing this trend in Morocco. We had a lot of companies, and Boeing is one of them, trying to look for additional competitiveness and access to markets. And the fact that they partnered with Morocco is one of the examples that we've seen in the past decade, of companies trying to look for new opportunities to develop. And now what happened with COVID-19 and with the crisis is people are, I mean, companies, corporate, and even governments need to find new allies in this quest for cost competitiveness and efficiency. And we think that Africa and Morocco, as an African country, is the right partner to do so. We are currently doing it with Europe. We think we have to strengthen the relationship with the United States, because precisely we can bring efficiency, we can bring talent, skills, and we can also bring cost efficiency, which is key today, because let's face it, we need to save money, we need to be efficient if we want to remain, or save our corporate market share. So there's a lot that can be done, and the fact that the country showed resiliency in this very, very unique period of time we're living in shows that we can be a reliable partner, and Africa as a whole, because Morocco is just looking to things that are already in Africa, young talents available to work, and with a fantastic capacity for innovation.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadeki. Actually, that's an excellent segue into asking our colleague on the panel, Rick Angioni, to talk about something that you mentioned, which is the reshuffling of the manufacturing supply chain, or I should just say supply chains, I'm no expert when it comes to what part of the supply chain needs reshuffling. Frankly, I think all of it does, but it's a good segue here, because I know that's something that Mr. Angioni wanted to focus in on and talk about. And certainly, I understand, one, that's very important for Morocco, because as you said, Mr. Sadeki, there is a young population ready to work and has always been, and pretty enthusiastic to do so, and in these very difficult times of COVID, nations and people and communities rise to the challenge, or they don't. And it's very heartening to see and great to see that Morocco has done that. So let's move into what that really means in real terms, using a private sector example. So I'm going to direct this, as I say, to this next question to Mr. Rick Angioni. The context here to initiate this question for you, Mr. Angioni, is really what I understand from you, that Exum's authority lapsed in 2015 and remained without a board quorum for over three years, and was therefore unable to approve long-term export finance transactions. However, luckily, prior to our friend COVID, on May 9th, 2019, we understand that you have a new president, Kimberly Reid, that was sworn in as the Chairman of Exum, and the day after, the U.S. Senate confirmed Judith Pryor and Spencer Bacchus. And the day after, the US Senate confirmed Judith Pryor and Spencer Bacchus. This, I believe to you, has marked a restoration of the quorum on Exum's Board of Directors. And after nearly four years of Exum not being fully operational, this was a meaningful change. So it seems Exum has some catching up to do. Could you please describe Exum's activities across the continent, specifically in Morocco, stressing the US-Africa partnership to help recover with Morocco, which, of course, Mr. Siddiqui has emphasized that we need to grow that relationship between the US and Morocco, Africa, even more, but specifically Morocco. Over to you, Mr.?
Well, thank you, Miriam. And firstly, I'd like to say that I'm very honored to be part of this panel. With respect to the restoration of our quorum, obviously, we're very happy, and we're very happy with Chairman Reed, who is an enthusiastic supporter of the bank and has given the leadership of the bank to, to promote US goods and services all over the world and specifically in, in Africa. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the bank, for, for the audience that may not know a little bit about the bank. The bank was actually founded in nineteen thirty-four. It is the Export Credit Agency of the US government, and their mission is to finance US exports, yes, goods and services. The bank has a big balance sheet. The bank has a balance sheet of a hundred and thirty-five billion dollars, and therefore, we have significant capacity to provide liquidity. As Ali noted, you know, even during a crisis, it is critical, you know, for governments, as they put in place fiscal measures and monetary measures, business has to continue. And of course, you know, the United States has led, you know, with stimulus and with fiscal measures and monetary measures, and we are succeeding, you know, to ensure that our economy remains the strongest economy in the world, and we are succeeding with that. So as Ali mentioned, we need to keep business going, because people need to work. And one of the things that we do as an export credit agency, we provide financing. And financing, as you well know, is the oxygen of any, of any economy, okay? And especially with COVID, what's interesting, and what we've seen in past crises, okay? We know that because of these various measures, we know that interest rates are likely to remain lower for longer. So with, especially in Africa, okay, that where they do not have depth of capital markets, you know, with the exception of a few countries, Morocco is certainly one, because they have depth, okay, and they can access the markets. It is critical, okay, for these countries to try to access cheap, cheap capital, okay? And we are one, we are one of the sources. So when you speak about supply chain, clearly, the supply chain, what's interesting is that, you know, a crisis like COVID, unlike the financial crisis, it has disrupted, you know, supply chains. It has disrupted demand on the demand side. So it has disrupted also, and it has made us recognize, okay, the critical importance, okay, of perhaps depending on only one region or one country, what I'd like to refer as one country, one risk, okay? So it is critical, when you look at, when we look at Exum Bank, and when we look at the US economy, and when we look at Morocco, and when we look at what we do, it is critical, this diversification. And Secretary Ross has noted, okay, Morocco has been a long and proud trading partner of the US. As Ali, as Ali noted, the key, I think, is to strengthen. I'd like to think that the relationship is already strong, and I think it is, but we need to strengthen it. And if we look at, at the history of the bank, okay, relative to Morocco, the bank started doing business with Morocco, supporting Royal Air Morocco in, in the nineteen seventies. And we still have that proud relationship. And we hope that Morocco, Royal Air Morocco continues to buy Boeing aircrafts. You know, in, in the nineties, we supported the power sector in, in, in Morocco, you know, supporting some of the largest power projects in Morocco. Some of these power projects provide, and they're still operating, they provide, provide up to forty to fifty percent of the energy, of the energy of Morocco. And recently, we've been doing, we've been doing financing with OCP, for example. The point that I'm trying to make as part of the supply chain on the supply side and the demand side, and what the Exum Bank's role as a finance agency, okay, is that Morocco is a strong trading partner of the US, a very important trading partner of the US, and a very important market for, for Exum Bank. As Secretary Ross noted, we have over three billion dollars of exports going to Morocco. It is the second-largest destination market in North Africa. It is the third-largest destination market in Africa, okay? So as, as an institution that has the mandate to support and to finance US exports, we are ready, okay, to consider, okay, any financing for any Moroccan company that buys US goods and services to ensure that they have the liquidity and the financing to buy US goods and services. That is the point, our M mandate of the bank. So on the demand side, okay, we are ready to do that for Moroccan companies, okay? On the supply side, we are doing that so that the supply chain is not disrupted. We are providing, okay, financing to ensure that US manufacturers, okay, are manufacturing so that they can export to Morocco. This is the mission. And, and if we look now at the crisis, as you know, we, we spoke a little bit about Africa. I am a strong, strong advocate about Africa. And you asked me about what has the bank done since Chairman Reed? Well, I'm very, very proud to tell you that the bank, you know, has done one of the largest projects ever in the history of the bank, and the bank was founded in nineteen thirty-four. And that was Mozambique LNG. It's not in North Africa, it's in Mozambique. That is the larger, one of the largest projects ever done by the bank, a twenty-five billion dollar project, where we are providing financing of almost five billion dollars to that project, okay? And that was done and authorized last year, and reaffirmed during the, during the pandemic, just to show the commitment of the bank, okay, to, to a market like Mozambique. And the same message goes to Morocco. We believe in Morocco. We believe in the diversification. Morocco is a quasi-developed economy, you know. I think they've done all the right things, and they are doing all the right things. We just want to make sure that we continue to support, okay, US exports to Morocco, and they're our, and as I've said, is the third-largest destination market for the US. Over.
Thank you, Mr. Angioni. So you pretty much covered one of my follow-up questions as it relates to how in a, in an economy trying to recover, an economy around the world here, focusing on Morocco and all of Africa as a continent, that will require some stimulus package. We talked sort of what those stimulus packages look like, and they're not called stimulus packages. They're called something different, as we've discussed. Apologies, my light has gone out, so hopefully you can see me all right. But I did ask, one of the things I wanted to ask, which you addressed, is how does Exum financing play a role in the recovery in Morocco? And you've already addressed a bit of that. So what I'd like to do with, if you, if you can come back and provide further commentary, that's fine. I'd like to sort of turn it over to the panels to comment on themselves, if they have any commentary to this point that you've made. So shall I invite Mr. Douglas Kelly? Part, we heard a little bit about Boeing, just very briefly for Mr. Angioni, and we'll be talking about that with you. So maybe we'll start with you and then turn over to Mr. Siddiqui for any further comments before we move on to your additional question.
Yeah. Hello, Miriam, and thank you to the Corporate Council of Africa for allowing me to be part of this panel and, and talk about the Boeing-Morocco partnership. Boeing and the Kingdom of Morocco have had a long history together, over fifty years. One of our key, key partners is Royal Air Morocco, and we've had over eighteen years of experience within the supply base, the aerospace ecosystem, and the aerospace industry. I would agree with Mr. Angioni and Mr. Siddiqui, Minister or Director Siddiqui, that, you know, the ease of business, the opportunities within the country of Morocco have made our partnership very valuable. Some of the precedents that we had going into our original agreement that we signed in twenty sixteen was around, we had a very successful joint venture that grew in value over the years. The skilled labor force, as Director Siddiqui mentioned, was very advantageous for us. And then the fact that the aerospace industry in Morocco comprised of over a hundred and thirty companies, of which had been operating very successfully. So when we entered into the agreement and discussion to work jointly with the Kingdom of Morocco on by twenty twenty-eight, growing the aerospace industry by over eighty-seven hundred jobs and adding one billion dollars in economic value, we knew that we were entering into an agreement with the kingdom that, that had a baseline of success and had a true future, where we could entice and add, through the Kingdom of, of Morocco, their, their incentives to have our supply base either relocate operations, add supply, sub-tier supply capabilities, or even contract within the country at a very, very competitive rate to help us continue to be very competitive in a, in the market. So some of those, you know, in the last very short period of time, I'm not sure if Director Siddiqui would like to add any additional comments about the MOU?
It was a billion, a billion-dollar economic impact annually.
Annually, that's right. Very good. And we, we are, you know, as you know, we have, we have, we have made a lot of progress in the short period. The agreement goes, and, and our one billion annual growth is expected to be, to grow exponentially through the years and maintain that from twenty twenty-eight and on. We have included over a hundred and eighty-five million dollars of economic value that projects to grow to over four hundred million. So we're about thirty, thirty-five percent on our way to our mutual target. We've increased and added jobs of close to thirty-five hundred over the short period that we've been engaged. We, and, and, and probably the, the biggest attribute or validation of the competitiveness of the market is the aerospace industry and our suppliers. It, it's a long-term business they enter into, and so we're not looking for one or two years of operational capacity or capability. We're looking for twenty to thirty years of business plus. And so entrance into the market is difficult, but once in the market, having the, you know, the support of the Kingdom of Morocco or the government, having the skilled workforce that is continuing to grow, having the training and the education within the country to be able to infuse the businesses as they grow and enter with labor is, is key. And I should say that the Ministry of Industry, our relationship, their commitment to the country and its growth is, has been one of a kind. And, 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 and it's why we chose to enter into this very, very unique partnership. But what I was alluding to was, as of twenty sixteen, but really around the year twenty eighteen, so for two years now, we've added more than four direct Boeing suppliers, so five total direct tier-one suppliers to the Boeing company, which is, you know, you see that in the United States, but even the United States hasn't seen that type of growth of new direct suppliers to Boeing. One of those being, and we're, and we're both very proud of a Moroccan-owned business that won a contract in twenty eighteen to be delivering tubes directly to the Boeing company for the seven-eight-seven program. So again, a major success. We're happy, very thrilled and bullish about the partnership. Any comments?
Sorry, go ahead, Miriam.
Please, no, please, Mr. Siddiqui. I was going to follow up with something different and move it slightly, so please, continue.
I'm, I'm just very, I'm glad that Doug Kelly stressed the fact that what's, what was key was the partnership, and that's what I mentioned. My answer before that was, we need to work hand in hand with, with the, with the private sector in order to listen to what they need and, and have the government be efficient in their response to that need. And this is why, to get back to how we intend to recover. We already have this recipe where we partner with, with the companies in order to make them successful in the country. And now, more than ever, companies will need to have someone to listen to their issues and try to provide them with the right answers. So it's, we are not going to change the recipe. We're just gonna be more and more, doing more and more what we've already done and proven successful at prior to the crisis. It's all the more important now to do it.
Very good, and goes into my question. It also emphasizes what we've already heard about the PPPs, very important public-private cooperation, which, which the, the fundamentals we're hearing about is you have this framework already pre-COVID, so what you're doing is just building upon an already successful framework that you started with the public-private cooperation for the enhancement of Morocco's economy. It just happens to be a little bit more different, nuanced, slightly perhaps adjusted post-COVID economic recovery. So that just brings me to something that you slightly raised, Mr. Siddiqui, about it changing slightly now. And of course, Mr. Kelly has, has slightly touched upon this, but let me be a little bit more specific about it. And to ask, with COVID, how do you see, if at all, any pros, cons, negatives, positives with the existing MOU? What are the challenges, if any? We already said that it's going to be even more important to build upon the success of that MOU and that relationship, but certainly there have to be some, some considerations of what we're facing, a very different crisis right now. Do you see an impact in any other way, negative or positive for either side, Morocco or Boeing? And if so, what, what is that? And let me ask Mr. Kelly to address that first, please.
Of course, of course. Well, the, you know, the aerospace industry has, has been impacted greatly. I'm not going to say it's been impacted more than other industries, but we have seen our supply base drastically impacted and having to take steps around employment and, and, you know, being able to maintain the business structure that they've got. And with, with that, we're seeing a restructuring of the aerospace industry. There will be companies that will no longer be able to support. Those businesses will be consolidated, but there'll be new entrants into the business. As we move forward, we, you know, as we, we move through the crisis and start the airline and start to see the airline industry come back in and grow back to where they were at in their 2019 numbers. We believe that Morocco is, is uniquely in a place to be able to, you know, with the work that's been done with the current supply base and the continued work through this crisis that we have done in order to increase capabilities in the country, enabling companies to find low-cost, highly skilled workforce to remain competitive. As the restructure goes forward, we believe that Morocco will grow and that the success that has been up to this point in time will only be enabled to grow exponentially because we'll have the capabilities within country, very little need to export any business. So aerospace, sub-tier business, the, the infrastructure, the ecosystem will all be encompassed within the country, which goes a long ways to continuing to drive costs down. We will come out of this needing to remain very, very competitive as the growth goes forward. And I cannot stress the, the partnership with the government will be a, a strong, a strong baseline to move forward into the, into 2021.
Mr. Siddiqui, do you have any comments to that before we move on? I'm getting some questions already from the, from the participants a little early, which is great. But comments from you to what Mr. Kelly just said.
Well, I, I totally agree with, with, with what Mr. Kelly just said. And we are already seeing that this happening in, in the country. I was mentioning how resilient the country was. Well, obviously, we, every country in the world has been shaken up by the, by the COVID-19 crisis. And we are following what's happening in our most important sectors. And with the movement even, it's our, one of the leading sectors in terms of exports, textile and apparel as well. And what we've seen happening abroad are the forecasts are not so good. If you, if you look at the current forecast for jobs and employment, well, there is supposed to be a decrease of about forty percent of jobs in aerospace in Europe. And while, when you compare it to the forecast in Morocco, it's less than that. It's around ten to fifteen percent. And the reason why, and it's just for an adjustment period, according to the experts. So we will be back to the same level of job creation that we were before the crisis. And the reason why we are less impacted is pretty simple to understand. We're young, so there's a lot of potential, okay? If you compare any site, any manufacturing site in Morocco, you have a lot, a lot of young people. The average age in Morocco is around twenty-six, twenty-seven years old, when it is forty-six in Western Europe, for instance. So when do you want, if you're a company and you want to bet on the future of a site, well, you, you do, you have to work those numbers because they're important, because you need to see where is your future. And, and, and our youth is our future. So there is this. And then, most importantly, there is the cost competitiveness. So if you need to save money and to be an up and running and to be able to, to, to preserve your, your current jobs and, and avoid as much as possible today of other jobs, well, you need to find a way to do it. And having a Boeing calls Morocco a best value country. We like to call ourselves a best cost country. Well, you need to rely on your best cost sites in order to maintain your profits and your company. So this is the kind of partnership that we want to promote. We know that we are the type of, of country that you can find the easy access to good engineers, good technicians. Human capital is good. And you know that they will be, they will have the right skills, but they also will be cost competitive, which is very important right now. And there will be a, a pool of, of available people for, for a long period of time, which is very important when you're planning long-term.
Very, very on point, makes perfect sense. Mr. Angioni, do you have anything to add to what's been? I'm sorry, I see Mr. Kelly has something he wants to touch upon here swiftly, yeah?
Yeah, I just, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to revalidate that, you know, when, when we talked about best country value, Morocco stands alone, not only for the tangible, but the intangible. We've touched on a lot of the intangible with the government's support and commitment, the tangible around the labor force and the labor cost and the commitment, the culture and the commitment by the workforce. We, we have seen in all of our companies, the workforce attrition rate down to less than one percent. The workforce very diverse and integrated, working dedicated to the success. We see the workforce in the aerospace industry as well as automobile, knowing that entry-level jobs in the aerospace business can provide a lifetime of employment and good employment. And so when we add up all of the things that the Kingdom Morocco offers, we, it stands alone as, as a best country value to the aerospace industry and to Boeing.
Yeah, hi, hi, Miriam. Yeah, I'd like to add on what Doug has just said. And, and it's for those reasons why, because, because of such a strong enabling environment in Morocco, one should not be surprised why Morocco is one of the most attractive destination markets for investments. And we like that because, again, as an export credit agency where we finance US exports, what we have seen over the years that exports follow investments. And to the point that Doug has also made about his supply chain of local Moroccan companies providing parts for the seventy-sevens, I want to make sure that that's not get, that does not get disrupted and to the extent that they most likely purchase some parts from the US, okay? We would be able to consider providing financing for those, for the, for those companies. Over.
Thank you, Mr. Angioni. It was, that was exactly where I was headed because we were talking a lot about the intangibles. And one of the tangibles is the actual infusion of cash. And that was something that I wanted to address to you. So what you're saying, if I understand correctly, is you guys are prepared to be injecting that, that, that money in as part of the, if, if you call that a tangible, yes?
Yeah, let me, let me be clear. When, when we speak about cash, yes, absolutely. But to begin, we have no country limit for Morocco, okay? Our financing is tied to US exports. When we speak, when you speak about cash, we are effectively providing financing. We are provide, we are a debt provider. So we could provide medium and long-term financing. We could provide liquidity. That's what we can say, we are providing cash. We do not provide equity, we provide debt. And as I have said, financing is the oxygen of any economy, of any country. You know, without financing, you cannot operate. And, and so that's what we could do for the Moroccan economy. And, 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 and as I've said, we have, we have no country limit for Morocco. And we are open across the spectrum for Morocco because we look at countries and we look at the risk, just like a financial institution, you know? We look, we look at the risks. We, obviously, every country has some level of risk. But as we look at Morocco, we find it an attractive market. We have tremendous risk appetite for Morocco. We're open across the spectrum. We could provide practically eighteen to twenty-year financing for certain projects in Morocco. So the appetite for Moroccan risk is great and we can support it. And we have the balance sheet to do it.
Great, this all sounds very positive. And we're already getting these questions that are tying right into what everybody has said. With permission from the Corporate Council of Africa, Beavah Kabeen, if I may, shall I start right away into some of the questions we're getting from the audience? I think it might be useful to do that. I'm not sure if someone wants to give me a yes on a, on the chat function. And I'm giving them, yes, please, great. So one of the points that you just made, Mr. Angioni, brings me to one of very good questions, I think, which is, and there are several which I'll, I'll attempt to address here because we do luckily have the time. As the Moroccan economy reopens, and forgive me, I'm looking off to the chat function slightly away from the camera. As the Moroccan economy reopens, what key sectors will the recovery fund focus on? And how will Morocco's economic recovery help facilitate AFC FTA implementation and success? I'm inclined to address this question directly to Mr. Siddiqui first, if I may, if that's all right, please.
To be, to be very clear, there is no preferred sector currently. Obviously, we, we have to pick our battles. This is something that we do when we have to place our all the subsidiary or incentive packages that we, that we build. But the general, I mean, the main principle that we, that we've been using for the past five years in the industrial acceleration plan that has been put in place and launched in front of His Majesty the King was very clear. We needed to be able to help any sector that needed help, okay? So I don't see any recovery plan that would specifically focus on the one or two sectors. It's more about supporting the, the entire economy and providing incentives to companies that would need it. So there is a program that will mainly concern SMEs, small and medium companies in Morocco. We have, we have an agency that is completely dedicated to SMEs that we provide with the companies with, with, with incentives in order for them to start invest or change their, their line of business. And obviously, there is what we call the strategic plans that are, that are set up by each department, each ministries, each ministry, sorry. And for the, the Ministry of Industry, we, we, we intend to have another industrial acceleration plan. It's going to be called the Industrial Recovery Plan, which will basically help all the, the sectors on the same basis that we did before, which is a strong cooperation with the private sector. We already have that into what we call the ecosystems, the ecosystem approach, where you have the public and private working together, adding universities, local and central government. So an ecosystem is a, let's say, a consistent universe of production. So you would have, we have ecosystem for aerospace, we have that for automotive. We do have that for textile and apparel and for chemical industry, pharmaceutical, all, basically all. We, we, we've been structuring fourteen sectors, manufacturing sectors in fifty, fifty-two ecosystems. And we intend to do the same for, for the recovery plan, which is working with the companies in order to identify where help is needed and try to provide the incentives to answer the need of the companies. So basically, to, to, to be, to be clear, we will not be choosing specific sectors. I don't, we, we would rather have the entire economy.
Great. What do you envision Morocco's economic recovery help will do to facilitate the Africa free, excuse me, Afro continental free trade area implementation and success of that? Is there anything in particular that has come about that you've discussed internally that has been, has arisen on how you will focus in on AFC FTA, please?
We're already engaged in all the negotiations and Morocco is clearly in favor of helping Africa become, become stronger together. And so Minister El Amin is, in his speech, he mentioned how critical it is for Africa to become a, a, a strong region together with all the members. And we see that it's, it's what we can be, what, what can be achieved through the AFC FTA. So we, we, we see it favorably. I don't, I don't, I don't know if the, the recovery plan will help enhance or accelerate the discussions. But I think that the recovery plan will have impacts, positive impacts on, on all our neighboring countries because Morocco has a lot of, as a country, as I said before, is invested in Africa and heavily invested. So anything that is good for the economy, the Moroccan economy, is going to be good for, for the neighboring countries and the countries where Morocco is already invested. This is what we call South-South cooperation. And, and, and all that is currently being done is clearly aligned with our high strategy, which is cooperating with the all Sub-Saharan Africa and all African countries.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. Does anyone on the panel have anything to add to that before I move on to the next question? No, okay. Well, so this has been talked about in a broad way, but there's a specific question from an audience member, and I think it's a good one. And I'd like to address it to, to Mr. Angioni first because you're in the business of risk assessment in a more specific way than, than others are. But certainly, others on the panel assess risk in a different format. Yours is unique. So I'd like to see from your perspective, given your focus in Africa and Morocco, what is the most important risk you foresee for Morocco in the coming two to three years?
Right. Well, that's a, that's a good question, that's a difficult question. And I mean, given, given the way the markets are, I mean, it is difficult to predict the future. I think that's more for economists to look at the future and predict what could possibly happen in two or three years. At times, it's even difficult to predict what will happen next week. But in terms of risk, as, as, as a finance agency, as a banker, you know, bankers always look at risk. They're in the business of risk. They can find risk in anything, okay? And, but at the same time, they look at mitigating risk, okay? I have an acronym, actually, when, when, when we speak about risk and when, when I review risk, and the acronym I use is FOSSEL, F-O-S-S-E-L. And basically, I divide risks based on that acronym. You know, you're looking at financial risk, operating risk, social risk, security risk, environmental risk, legal risk. So if I were looking at a transaction or a project in Morocco right now, of course, I could find some risks, but I don't really see, okay, Morocco, Morocco as a, as a high-risk country. Certainly not, it's not. And the, and, and the reflection of that is that we are open across the board. We can provide long-term financing. And, and, and the other thing also, you know, for Africa, obviously, for, for Morocco, but certainly not Morocco, one of the issues is clear, you know, very much is, is debt, okay? You know, if we go back to the financial crisis, one of the laws, one of, one of the lessons of the financial crisis, you know, and people tend to have a short memory, that, that one of the, one of the problems was excessive public and private debt, okay? If you look at Morocco, Morocco doesn't have that issue. Morocco can, can access capital markets, you know? Even though they have not accessed the capital markets, the euro bond market in the last few years, but Morocco has access to that, you know? They have, they have a fairly strong banking sector. They have, they have a strong equity market in the Casa Blanca Stock Exchange. I think the key, and I think just to, I think the key, we have to be positive. You know, we are going to recover from this, absolutely, okay? Just like any other crisis, we've recovered. And just as the US is leading, okay, you know, and we are succeeding, we will, we will succeed. We will, we will succeed. We will defeat this virus. And, and, and we have to think about creating wealth. And that leads me to what we're trying to do also under the Prosper Africa Strategy, which I think, you know, when you speak about Africa, it is a strategy to promote trade and investments, you know? And to, you know, get away from aid, you know? No country, no people wants to be dependent on aid all the time. Morocco is certainly not one of them. And so I see a lot of positives in Morocco. And I hope that that partnership. And just to give you one more point, we, we actually, just as Secretary Ross mentioned, there is a US delegation going to Morocco this week. There are representatives from our leadership who are on that trip, meeting with various stakeholders to show our commitment. You know, historically, we've also had a very close, you know, speaking about partnership with Ati General Wafa Bank. And I, and I was very impressed by the minister on how he would like to strengthen the US Moroccan relationship. Over.
Thank you very much, Mr. Angioni. Any comments, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Siddiqui, to that before we move on to the next question?
I would say, just maybe very quick, we, we do have, as governments or government members, to, to, to anticipate any, any risk we foresee. So we do have our own risk assessments. And if you want the, I mean, the vision that we have currently, there is one, one, one thing that is taken very seriously in Morocco is education and training. So I don't know if we can talk about risk there, but we, at least, we know that there is an issue that we are currently addressing. It has been made as a national priority to make sure that vocational training is of the, at the utmost standard, that every young people entering the job market is properly trained to enter the job market. And, and this is something that we, we know we have to address. And this is one of the big challenges in, in Morocco education and training. But thankfully, this is something that we've been working on. And the, the, the issue with, with our trained people and good engineer and good technician is brain drain. And this is something also that we try to, to address in Morocco because we train a lot of brilliant engineers that every year leave the country, which is good. But unfortunately, we would like to have them work in the country. So I would say that this is something that is currently a, a challenge for Morocco, keeping the young, training them according to the best standards and keeping them in the country and not exporting them. Like it's, it is the case in several sectors in Morocco and in the digital field, for instance. This is something that we, we, but hopefully, this is something that we're working on right, right now.
And I would, I would add, for us, for the Boeing Company, our risk, our risk is, is supply of parts. And any interruption to supply of parts can impact our production system where we cannot recover. And, and that is, that is paramount. And, and one of the main reasons that our partnership with the Kingdom Morocco, the geopolitical basis for how the country operates, the safe country, the labor force, as I've mentioned. And, and, you know, it's a labor force that produces parts extremely high quality and on time. They take pride in that. And so for us, the entrance into business and the maintenance, the long-term maintenance of the business, the Kingdom Morocco offers really at risk averse opportunities for our supply base.
Very good, very helpful to hear it from one particular entity like Boeing, what they, what they consider the risk to be. I want to go back to quickly, it's not the risks, but the areas of, of focus, if you will, that Mr. Siddiqui brought up. And it, it does remind me, brain drainage is a really big problem across, I think, North Africa, Middle East, Levant with the Arab Spring. And even prior to that, we can speak about Iraq, for instance. In 2003, the brain drainage was pretty excessive at the, from that war. And it is a problem. You want to educate and bring high-educated people, educate them in the country, even outside, but to come back and really feed back into their own country like Morocco. I happen to know some phenomenal, because my mother is an aerospace physicist that works for NASA. She knows very well-known, very, very well-accomplished physicist, physicist named Kamal Udriyri, which I have no doubt the government knows very well because he works with them and I've worked with him with nonprofits in Morocco. He works in the aerospace field and he tries very hard to live between the United States and Morocco to do exactly what Mr. Siddiqui said, which is to give back into that country and not lose that, that element of education. You brought up, you brought up technology. Now, this is a little off, not off-topic, but it, but it's certainly relevant in some respects. And I, I can't say that you're going to be able to answer this, but I think it's important to raise it and one that someone has asked that I'd like to, to bring up. What, you know, when it comes to technology and digitalization of the justice system across, that we're talking, we're digitalizing the justice system, the legislative system, all aspects of government, all aspects of society and civil society. And someone's asked a question about the adaptability of the Moroccan judicial system. Again, slightly different off-topic from the real focus of this panel, but the, the question goes to system and resilience in a crisis. Can we expect some sort of long-term strategy for comprehensive digitalization of justice? Now, the focus there on that question is justice, but it's really about a strategy for comprehensive digitalization. Or did, I'm not sure if I'm even saying the word right because I'm looking at it spelled differently, but across all sectors, across all government. Mr. Siddiqui, you talked a little bit about technology. There's, all countries have to sort of become adaptable to it. Can you comment a bit about that, about the justice system? If not, just generally across government systems?
Well, there, there was a dedicated agency that was created specifically to address the issue of digitalization in Morocco and for the government. So the, the issue is clearly, and this was done prior to the crisis. The COVID-19 crisis just accelerated the work of the agency, which is not simple because, as you said, it's cross-sectorial and, and cross-administrations as well. So it's justice, but not only justice. It also raises question for education and, and all the, basically, all the paperwork that needs to be done by the citizen. So what we call the eGovernment is currently been, been addressed by, by the agency that was created for that purpose. So to answer the question, we are currently working on it. There was already a lot of things that has, have been done in Morocco in, just in a few months. And prior to this, in the, on the ADD, it's the name of the agency, the governmental agency that was created, is currently working in partnership with all the different administrations in order to help them become more digital. And I have a property function in e-government. So yes, it, it is something that we're working on. It has been clearly pointed out as a priority by, by our government. And we're, we're going, we're going the right way, I think, with, with having the dedicated structure to deal with all the, all the, the issues that the government can face in that, in that area.
Very good. So it's certainly something that was focused on before the crisis, but as most countries now will be a primary focus or additional, I should say, top-up of focus on that area. So we're going to come to a close. And I would like to ask, invite the panelists to each provide some closing remarks. If I could start with Mr. Kelly and then Mr. Angioni and then lastly, Mr. Siddiqui. So please, over to you, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I think, well, thank you again for the opportunity. I've mentioned a lot about the success we've had and the success that we are set for, for the next twenty to thirty years as we grow the aerospace industry. I should say that we, we also have expanded from a Boeing defense. So it's, the Boeing Enterprise has committed to the success of the Kingdom of Morocco. We recently signed and came to an agreement on a sale of Apache's, first of our, first of our kind with the, with the Kingdom that we're very, very excited about. So it's, it's not only the aerospace industry Boeing commercial, but it's also the Boeing Defense side that are enabling, through the work with the Kingdom, through their efforts, with their labor force and driving cost out and the stabilization of the country. We're very excited for the next, next thirty years.
Thank you, Mr. Angioni.
Yes, thank you again. Yes. No, I simply would like to reaffirm our commitment to Morocco, our commitment to provide financing to Moroccan public and private sector companies. And we will defeat the virus. And tomorrow will be a new day. So let's be positive. Over.
Positivity is much needed at this time as each day brings very interesting new challenges, like an earthquake in the middle of a speech. So you never know what's going to happen tomorrow, next week. But positivity shall keep us afloat. Now, let me, last but certainly not least, turn it over to Mr. Siddiqui for his closing remarks. Please.
Thank you, Miriam. First, I would like to thank CCA and all the organizing team for the great job they've done and, and for the quality of the panel and today's discussion that we had. I would say that I would, I would, I would like to build on what, what Mr. Angioni said. And positivity is definitely key today. And, and again, for, for the case of Morocco and Africa in general, we think that there is a lot of opportunities that can be brought by the crisis. And I haven't stressed enough how, how strongly we believe in, in the opportunities that, that are currently at stake with the reshuffling of, of, of the, of the trade relationship, of the rebalancing that stay of, of the manufacturing world. And we know that Africa can bring something. And in the case of Morocco, there is a royal vision that is currently in, in place and taking place. And this vision helps us have a long-term vision on how we want to develop. And this is what we need, we should to keep in mind. It's, we have short-term issues, but the long-term is positive. And Africa is the future. This is something that we haven't said enough. But we, maybe this kind of events that we're living in currently with COVID crisis may, maybe help, is helping some of our decision-makers to take the right decision, which is betting on the future, betting on Africa and betting on Morocco. So again, positivity is key, but we have reason to, to, to stay positive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Siddiqui. And thank you to all the panelists. I'd like to let you know that we, in fact, do have a few questions coming in. And unfortunately, just due to time, I'm going to, to ask those individuals. There's a, a couple, Mr. Lazra, who asked a question directed to Mr. Angioni. It's something I'd rather the two of you directly discuss. And then we have a Kenyan citizen who has a question for Mr. Siddiqui. My suggestion would be with, I believe I've already received permission from the CCA about this. Any additional questions from participants? Please direct them to the CCA. The email is on the flyer for this webinar. If you, for any reason, cannot find that, please feel free to email me at Evershed Sutherland and I can direct you great, directly to the CCA or you can go to their website and ask these particular questions of our lovely panelists. Because I know there's a lot to ask and a lot of information that can be relayed. Very interesting discussion topic. Now, I'm going to close here and thank everyone for their time. And also thank the CCA for inviting me to moderate this panel. It was very enjoyable. I certainly learned a great deal from it. And I think I am supposed to be turning it up, turning it over to Florie Lisaire. So I'll leave now. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Miriam. Let me say good morning and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Florie Lizir, President and CEO of the Corporate Council on Africa. And we are so pleased that all of you have joined us today for this excellent discussion. We know that there are lots of things going on during UNGA Week. And so we appreciate you joining us and, and being a part of this discussion. I'd like to say a special thanks to our keynote speakers, His Excellency Muleh Hafid Al Alami, Minister of Industry, Trade, Investment and the Digital Economy, Kingdom of Morocco, and the Honorable Will Baross, the US Secretary of Commerce, for honoring us with their participation today and their keynote remarks, which were excellent. Thank you to our board member, Ambassador Tom McDonnell, for providing welcome remarks to our esteemed panelists as well for sharing your perspectives on how we can work together, the US government, with the government of Morocco, as well as our private sectors, to support economic recovery in Morocco, as well as other nations around the continent. CCA is pleased this week to host a number of events on the sidelines of UNGA focused on the theme of economic recovery in Africa and the way that we can partner to support that recovery, which is so critically needed at this point. Our discussions are meant to highlight the ways in which US and African governments and their private sectors can collaborate on a path for recovery and economic growth as we come out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our UNGA events this week build on the CCA Leaders Forum that we held in June, during which we hosted four African heads of state, senior US government officials and business executives, and in which we had thousands of people participate. And we thank you if you were there. The discussions highlighted COVID and post-COVID strategies and initiatives shaping the US-Africa relationship, such as Prosper Africa, which we touched on today, the New US Development Finance Corporation, the US-Kenyah Free Trade Agreement, and the African Continental Free Trade Agreement. Now, as announced previously, our US-Africa Business Summit has been postponed to 2021. But do know that it is still our plan to hold the summit in Morocco. We have found a formidable partner in the government of Morocco, and we thank them for their continued enthusiasm and support. And it was important, as a part of our UNGA events, that we feature our summit host and give the government of Morocco an opportunity to highlight key steps being taken towards economic recovery in Morocco. Morocco remains a key partner to the US, and it was insightful to learn more about US government initiatives in Morocco and the partnerships being fostered between the Kingdom of Morocco and US businesses like Boeing, as well as others. CCA will continue to engage and support our member companies and US and African public and private sector partners as we all work to develop solutions for economic recovery and resilience in this new era. Tomorrow, we will continue the conversation on partnering for economic recovery with a spotlight on Nigeria, Africa's largest economy. We welcome you to join us tomorrow, September 24th, at 10:00 AM Eastern Standard Time. In the meantime, please stay well and have a great rest of your day. Thank you so much.